Okay, good evening. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. TJ, will you please perform roll call?
Mrs. Best.
Present.
Mrs. Davis.
Present.
Mrs. Epling Skinner.
Present.
Mrs. Harless.
Present.
Mrs. Hudson is absent.
So welcome to the September twenty-third Worthington Board of Education meeting. I'd like to thank you all for joining us in person and those of you who are here online. I'm Kelly Davis. I'm this year's vice president. And I would like to introduce you to board member Amber Epling Skinner, treasurer TJ Cusick, superintendent Dr. Trent Bowers, school board member Stephanie Harless, and school board member Jennifer Best. If you're able, if you please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to signify of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting?
So moved. Seconded.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or suggested changes? Right. TJ, will you please call for the vote?
Mrs. Best.
Yes.
Mrs. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. Epling Skinner.
Yes.
Mrs. Harless.
Yes.
Okay, next up we're gonna have public comment. And as we prepare for the public comment portion of our meeting, I'd like to share a reminder of our expectations. The school board and the administrative staff encourage and appreciate community interest in meetings of the Board of Education. This section of the agenda is designed to hear views of community members about their schools and items on the agenda. Each speaker will be asked to address the board at the visitors' podium so that this speaker's remarks, excuse me, may be heard clearly. The speaker should give their name and street address and limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Consistent to our policy ninety-one thirty on public complaints, we ask that complaints about a particular employee be referred to the superintendent and not addressed during public session. We remind all speakers that our district values and respects all people as they are and that our district is committed to creating and maintaining safe spaces for all of our students and community members. As a reminder to our community that we value-
So, number one is the City of Worthington Memorandum of Understanding for the Outdoor Pool Area Discussion. So later in our agenda, there's a recommendation for approval for a memorandum of understanding with the City of Worthington regarding the potential future sale of the outdoor pool property. So TJ is going to provide some background and an overview, and then we can take some time to have a discussion, provide any feedback, and ask questions. And City Manager, Robyn Stewart, is here to answer those questions for any of us that have them that come up. So I'm gonna start with you TJ.
Yes, thank you. So as Ms. Davis indicated, we have some prestigious city administration here. So Robyn, if you want to come to the podium, I will give some background, and then if there are questions, she can answer them. So currently, we lease the outdoor pool site to Swim Inc., which is an independent third-party nonprofit. City of Worthington has placed a issue on the ballot, a bond issue on the ballot, to fund capital improvements to the outdoor pool. Important to note that these are not operating funds, but these are one-time capital, bond dollars, to fund improvements to the outdoor pool. So broadly speaking, school districts and cities can issue what they call tax-exempt debt, which means investors who own that debt don't have to pay federal income tax, and so that debt carries a lower interest rate. So it's advantageous for municipalities and school districts most of the time to issue tax-exempt debt. And so it's beneficial in this case for the city to do so. However, as you can imagine, there are all sorts of IRS rules around issuing tax-exempt debt, one of them being that the entity has to have a long-term interest in the asset that they are funding. So in this case, the city has to own the pool. And since we own the land, the city approached us about selling them the land so they could take advantage of these lower interest rates. The city drafted tonight's MOU, Memorandum of Understanding. It was approved by City Council last Monday, but it outlines broad terms, should the issue pass, of how we would transfer that land, among other things. Notably, that we would sell it to them for a dollar, but that it would come back to us if it was ever not used as an outdoor pool. And as part of that $1 transfer, we would expect school district residents to pay less than non-school district residents for memberships, but also that the city expects city residents to pay less than non-city residents because they are being asked to fund a tax. And so that's sort of the outline of this MOU in broad terms. In the end, we would draft and finalize a purchase agreement, should everything come to fruition, which would be more detailed in its time. But this is the point of this MOU tonight. So with all that background information, I'll turn it over to you, Ms. Davis, if we have any questions. I, Trent, or Ms. Stewart could answer them if possible.
So first, Robyn, thank you so much for taking time out of your evening to be here, to listen to our feedback, and answer any questions, and be part of this discussion. Do any of you have questions, concerns, feedback to give regarding the memorandum?
I can start.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Robyn, for being here. I just want to kind of repeat something you said. I mean, right now, it is Swim Inc., the nonprofit, that leases the property from us, but the purchase is with the actual City of Worthington. Is that correct?
Correct, yes. So thank you for inviting me to be here this evening, happy to answer any questions. So historically, the city has not been involved in the outdoor pool. It has been leased from the, the land has been leased from the school district to Swim Inc., a nonprofit that has operated it since the 1950s, when the original outdoor pool was constructed. Their financial model has not provided for the ability to replace the capital asset. Now that it is seven years old, they've been able to support the operations and support maintenance of the facility, but they did not have the funds to replace the facility. So they approached the city, since it's the only outdoor pool in the city limits of Worthington, and asked if the city would partner in that capital replacement. So that's what's proposed now, this fall, for consideration by voters, is a bond issue that the city would provide, that would be combined with some donation of funds from our cash reserves to replace the pool facility. So the proposal is, if the school board is amenable and the ballot issue passes, is that the city would acquire the land, the footprint for the outdoor pool, would construct the new pool facility, and then lease it to Swim Inc. for that ongoing operation moving into the future. It's a very similar model to what the city has with the art center, for those who may be familiar with the McConnell Art Center.
A little bit familiar. Thank you for that. And then my other, I guess it's a comment, because I know the answer, but the bond issue is actually for the City of Worthington. And I just am clarifying that because I've seen a lot of the "yes" signs in areas that are in the school district, but not the city. So I think people are just excited to promote it, but I think there's also some confusion.
Right, yes. It's the City of Worthington that placed the issue on the ballot. We only have the authority to place that on the ballot within the city limits, within our jurisdiction. So it is a ballot issue only in front of City of Worthington voters.
Thank you very much. That's it for me. Thank you for being here, I appreciate it. I have, so I know that we are in a very unique situation, because in most municipalities, the school district is not involved, and I understand that. But we have a pretty significant history of having this defined as a pool for the district and not the city proper. And so I know we have some kind of high-level language about the tiered pricing in here. My concern is, we are now in a position that we have to kind of clawback something from people in the district, when we've kind of already defined this as one community, and now we're kind of doing an us/them. And I understand why, to be clear, I understand why, just from thinking from the school district side of things. I just want to make sure that we're able to protect the interests of everybody in the district as we go through this process. So I'm wondering if you could give me a little bit of insight into what you're thinking around the tiered pricing language that would have a little bit more teeth, because I understand this is just an MOU, but eventually, we'll have to get to the contract, assuming that the bond passes.
Right. So we looked at it as this is the city stepping new into the space. Again, we have not had any responsibility whatsoever for the outdoor pool. So as we stepped into the space, we recognized that it was important to acknowledge that the school district as a whole has ties to this facility, as well as obviously ties to the land, since it is school district property. So it was important to us to continue to maintain that recognition. So you see, you know, there's a three-tiered recognition proposed for membership rates, where non-residents would have what would be the highest rate, school district residents would have a lower rate, a mid-tier rate, and then city residents in recognition that they're being asked to support the bond levy, which would result in the new facility that would be built, to have recognition for them also. So yet a third tier of rates for city residents. I still see it as definitely a joint initiative moving into the future, because it will still, if the ballot issue is passed and this moves forward, it would still be on the grounds of the school. There would be the shared parking arrangement. I would presume that we would continue to try to work together around usage of the outdoor facility, usage of the indoor natatorium, usage of the high school property. So there's language in here about trying to work together with parking for large-scale events. We know, I know, I had children that went through Thomas Worthington High School. I've been there for sporting events, where there's great utilization of that area. So trying to commit to working together so that there's not large-scale events at each facility all at the same time, if feasible. So I really do see it as a partnership, and for the first time, this proposal actually brings the city into that partnership, because it is a brand-new. Except for us, we recognize that many people in our community value the outdoor pool. We know that there are, the largest percentage of users of the pool facility are city residents, and so that's why the city has put forth a proposal, to see if the voters support this initiative for the city to come into this area.
So do you think there's a way, as we move forward with a contract, that, let me back up. I trust all of you, but this is going in perpetuity for the life that it is a pool, right? And so I just want to make sure that as we think about a contract, and we agree to the contracts ultimately, that there is a way that we can get language into that contract that does, because the way that it's written in the MOU, and I totally, again, I understand it's an MOU, but you could adhere to the language in the MOU, charge the district, the district residents $10 less than non-district, and then, you know, considerably less. And so from my perspective, as a school board member, I'm not, I'm not representing, right, the entire district, if that is ultimately where we end up. And so I'm just trying to, I feel good about this. I love the pool. The pool is so important to this community. I just want to make sure that we can maintain that for our entire community. So I'm looking for a way that we can get language in there ultimately, that will protect that kind of, from being a, you know, really significantly, significant price difference. Because, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's about $30 on 100,000 assessed value, is that right?
Appraised value, yes.
Appraised value, right. Not assessed, appraised.
It is 33 per 100,000 of the appraised. I was gonna say, I'm gonna double-check that my fact sheet, yes, I did.
So, just like property, yeah. Okay. So, so, that said, we're looking at roughly, on average, let's say, $100 per household, right? Which is great, because that's not a huge lift. But then if we think about that, right, like, I want to make sure that we're accounting for that proportionality. Not that we can write that in, but that's kind of where I'm coming from, right? Because it's not like Worthington residents are paying, you know, hundreds and hundreds of dollars, which again, is a good thing. So that makes, like, do you, so where's your, what are your thoughts on kind of that?
So, as you rightly pointed out, the MOU is just kind of the broad brushes of what this agreement will be, kind of the bare bones of it, so that voters would have a sense of what that arrangement would look like, recognizing that if the ballot issue passes, an actual real estate purchase contract would be put forth, that the schools and the cities will negotiate to work out some of the finer points. We have anticipated that there would, I have anticipated, and I know our team at the city has anticipated, there would be a meaningful difference between the non-resident and the school district rates. You know, you mentioned that you were concerned that they might be, you know, a difference of $10 or something, that there would be a meaningful difference there. We also expect that there would be, you know, a notable difference between the city and the school district rate in recognition of that levy. Those, those specific amounts have not yet been set. As the detailed design would be developed, once the vote occurs, if approved, we would launch into the detailed design, which will give a lot more detail as to what exactly operation is going to entail, and that helps us to clarify more directly into those numbers. But obviously, the levy allows for that capital replacement to not have to fall on the membership cost.
Right, which it doesn't today either, correct?
Correct, to the extent that Swim Inc. has not been able to save sufficient resources to do that capital replacement. The maintenance of it, the upkeep of it, has fallen within those membership rates. And the proposal is really designed to balance what's on a levy with what's in the membership rates, because some people have asked why the city doesn't propose to operate it, why the proposal to lease to Swim Inc. And that is because municipal pools throughout the region, as well as most places of the country, have an operating subsidy in addition to the capital. So if we were trying to work an operating subsidy into the cost of the levy, that drives the levy cost up higher. So it's kind of a balance between what the levy amount is and what the membership rates will be, but certainly taking into account the various user groups, and trying to make it so that it is still a valuable and valued commodity, and able to be used by the members of our community, not just in the city limits, but with the school district and the non-residents. We do not anticipate that the school, or the facility would stand alone with city resident usage only. We want to make sure that school district residents continue to have the opportunity to use the facility.
This, and the bond is estimated at 20 years, is that right?
Yes, we are planning a 20-year bond issue.
And so because those are capital improvements, is that, are we thinking that we will have to go back in 20 years for additional capital improvements, or are we hoping that that lasts longer than 20 years?
I would certainly hope the pool would last longer than 20 years, given that it's lasted 70 this time around, although I know in the 1990s, there were some major investments in it to, you know, extend that life. So, so yes, we are not anticipating that the pool would only last 20 years. We would expect it to have a longer lifespan than that. I think most, most pools are, estimated lifespan is about 50 years or so.
So at the end of that 20 years, when we, the bond falls off, then the city isn't incurring any additional fees, that's all falling on Swim Inc., is that right? So then...
So right now, we, I don't know what it's going to look like at the 20-year mark, because we're kind of trying to plan for the 20 years right now, because even our discussions around lease with Swim Inc. have not anticipated that that lease would necessarily extend beyond that 20-year timeframe. So right now, I'm only proposing what the next 20 years look like, and then my guess is, it'll be, you know, as that timeline is nearing its end, then the community leaders will get involved in saying, determining what happens from that point forward.
Okay. And I have a question that might be outside the scope, so you can tell me. Does the Parks and Rec Foundation, do you anticipate that being involved in the pool, or is that going to be, is that a separate thing entirely?
They are just getting kicked off the ground. We, actually, City Council just approved an agreement with them for this brand-new Parks and Recreation Foundation, for this, how the city and the foundation would work together, because they are so new, and that board has just gotten started. They're their own foundation, nonprofit. So what that additionally looks like in the future is not yet clear, but certainly, there could be some conversations around what, how that foundation focuses, and what their areas of interest are.
Okay. I think that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you for being here tonight, and thank you for answering our questions. So it's probably too early in this process to talk about potential timeline, right? Like, if the bond issue would pass, do you all have plans already drawn up for, like, the timeframe for this, or?
So if the bond issue passes, we expect to go into detailed design. That is estimated to take about six months, and then we would move into bidding and construction, which construction is estimated to take nine to 12 months. We would love to push that through a timeline that would enable us to maybe try to start right at the close of the outdoor pool season next year, and then try to get at least a partial season. The next summer, we know our community would love to not be without their outdoor pool for a summer season. Obviously, there's a lot of things that come into play with those construction schedules. I know the schools have been active, involved in trying to figure out construction schedules, and how to accelerate things as possible to benefit the community. So, but that's our general timeline. It's probably about six months for additional design work. As a government entity, we would bid the project, and then nine to 12 months of construction.
That is helpful, thank you. And you said, you know, you pointed out rightfully so, that the city's never really been in the outdoor pool business, but Swim Inc. is still in the picture, right? They're still partnering with you all, and still very actively involved in the operation and everything?
Our proposal is that the city would own and construct the facility, if approved by the voters, but then would lease it to Swim Inc. So they would still be involved in all of that day-to-day running of the facility and the programming.
So probably, the average community member might not see too much of a different, I mean, the facility, obviously, will be prettier and nicer and more updated, but it will be run, basically, similar to how it always has been. Okay. I think that's all I had. Kelly, oh, I did have a question maybe for Trent. Sorry to put you on the spot, but just, you know, because it is on, you know, the Thomas Worthington site, and it's right near the natatorium, do, I know you all have thought through this, and talked to the city extensively about all this, but maybe it would just be nice to hear, just sort of, any concerns you have, or no concerns you have, for sort of, you know, how this would impact school, the students, teachers?
Well, you know, I don't know that we have any concerns. So we, our hope was it always that we'd be able to figure out a way to save the outdoor pool. And I use the word "save" because that's kind of the condition that it's in. But when we rebuilt Thomas Worthington High School, we discussed, had lots of discussion about, should you move it to where the current student parking lot, or do you keep it in its current spot? The pool was always part of that conversation, and so part of that high school design was around keeping the pool where it is, and part of building the new natatorium, where we chose to build it, was part of partnering with the outdoor pool. So, you know, this has always, since the 1950s, been part of that site. So I think we're familiar with operating, not operating, but having a pool on that site. There's great efficiencies and great positive things for the community. It's not without challenge, right? I mean, as Robyn mentioned, we have student drivers, and there's lots of things going on in high school parking lots. But it is where there is a pool, it's where it works for the community, and we, all of our planning was around the outdoor pool, hopefully, coming to a solution point on that site. So it would be our hope that that happens.
And we've made it work since the 50s, right? So, okay. Thank you.
Well, I just want to say thank you again, Robyn.
Well, I just want to say thank you again, Robin. I think, you know, to Stephanie's point about it being an important thing to our community, I think is why it's important for us to have this conversation, give you our feedback, ask any questions and make sure we have clarification. One thing that Jennifer mentioned that I didn't realize was for people to have signs outside of the city of Worthington. And so is there a way for us to be able to communicate factual information for educational purposes only? That, you know, this is a City of Worthington initiative. You don't have to answer that right now, but if you could just give us some feedback, Trent or TJ, some feedback, I mean, I think that would be helpful in how we can get out the information about that. Just again, the tier part, and I know that no, nothing is set in stone. I know maybe no, I wrote down like percentages, if there's a percentage, but you know, obviously, we're here representing our entire school district. And so, but excited to partner with the city about this. But just want to be as helpful as possible, include all the information as possible and make sure that those who are committed to our pool now still have that experience with the pool and aren't like disheartened because they're of a different tier and all those things. And so just messaging that part of it. But also as you're considering prices, as your administration and council is considering pricing, just keeping in mind what it's been historically and what that means. Clearly, the families, if they have signs, what the pool means to people. But that's all I have. I don't really have any questions. I really do appreciate you taking time, even though you're usually busy on Monday nights.
Can I ask one more question? I'm sorry.
Absolutely, ma'am. Yep.
My notes are like all over the place. I know you have mirrored language, pricing language in the MOU with Swim Inc. that you do with us. So, you know, I'm assuming that as we, you know, go through, then you, is there, do you have any concern or have you had conversations with them about that language? And is there any concern that they will push back if it, you know, depending on how it's structured with us? Or are they just, I don't want to say along for the ride, but they, you know, they're invested because they want to manage the pool?
We've been, we've been talking with Swimming at the same time. We've been talking with, you know, representatives of the schools. So we've been trying to make sure that whole agreement mirrors each other. And they want to be, you know, fully a partner in this with us. Sometimes people ask me, you know, it seems like we've been talking about the pool for a long time. Why is it taking so long? And I think part of it is because we are, there are three different jurisdictions that, and organizations that are having this conversation. So if there's great opportunities for us to build and build that stronger partnership with each other. It also means there's a lot of conversations that occur to try to align those. So, and if this passes, like I mentioned, we'll bring back a real estate contract for consideration that will have more detail. So if, as you've looked at this MOU, there are other things that you want to make sure to have considered as part of that real estate contract, we are open to those conversations. We also anticipate, we, City Council also approved an MOU with Swim Inc. outlining the major points of a lease agreement. But more details with what that lease agreement looked like will come forward if the ballot issue is approved. You know, we kind of want to get the bare bones, but not spend all the time laying out all the details unless we know voters are behind the proposal.
Yeah, and I would love to, as, after it's approved by the voters or not, can't say yes or no, but I would love to have this conversation again, you know, just to, whether we come to, maybe we come to you guys next time or whatever. But I would love to continue this conversation just to make sure that we're all, we've thought through all the ins and outs because obviously, contract language is going to be a lot more in-depth and there's a lot to consider. And once we sell the property, then we are out of the land-owning business, unless you decide to not make it a pool. So, yeah, so I just want to make sure we cross all our Ts and dot all our Is.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Anything else you need from us, Robin?
No, unless there's more questions you have. But certainly happy to answer questions along the way too, even beyond this evening. So we're out talking to a lot of people, make sure we get their questions answered, so.
Thank you so much. So again, like I said before, this recommendation is later in our agenda, so we will take a vote on that later in our meeting. All right. So our next agenda item is from Suzanne Palmer, Director of Gifted Services. She is going to give us a presentation on the AP Seminar Course Proposal.
Thank you. Suzanne makes her way to the lectern along with Ashton Hunt. Ashton is a teacher at Worthington Kilborn High School. I'd just like to introduce Suzanne. She is our gifted coordinator. 12 years in Worthington Schools, 17 years overall as a gifted coordinator. And as you said, Kelly, one of her roles is to oversee College Board Advanced Placement Program. And so tonight Suzanne and Ashton will share with you a new course that we would like to offer and/or pilot next school year. So Suzanne began collaborating with our teachers last spring and a few of our teachers, including Ashton, attended a summer training for this course. So we're super excited because the course is designed as a seminar-style course for all students, allowing students to explore topics of interest. And again, just want to say, I really appreciate our teachers reaching out to us. They were excited about this when AP College Board proposed such course. Suzanne followed up and has been working really collaboratively with our teachers. So thanks for allowing her, them, to present this evening, so thank you.
All right. Thank you so much for having us this evening. I'm excited to share this opportunity with you this evening and kind of give you an update on the work that has been done and where we go from here at this point. So I'm sure many of you are familiar with the AP program that College Board has that we offer here in Worthington to both of our high schools. Currently, we offer 21 AP courses at our high schools, which is more than half of the number of courses that College Board offers. And this, as Angie mentioned, is a new course that we are currently looking to add in the near future. And again, as she said, we are in the beginning stages of this exploration for the course. And this evening, like I said, I want to just share with you the work that we've already engaged in and where we go from here. There we go. So the AP Semin, English 10 AP Seminar is a course that has been recently released by the College Board as a way to implement the seminar-style framework. It has been since 2016-17 school year that we have introduced a new AP course into our course offerings. Since adding AP Psychology, which is a course that does not have any prerequisites to it, we've continued to analyze our AP data. Not only do we look at the scores of our students, but we also look at the demographics of students enrolling in our AP courses every year. And so in those efforts to continue to diversify the rigorous courses like AP and to more closely mirror the hallways of our high schools, we've looked at other courses to help us in meeting that goal and providing access for all students. So with this class, it gives teachers flexibility to design units and use texts from existing curricula while meeting state standards and preparing our students for the English 2 OST that they are required to take each spring. And so just like AP Seminar, or I'm sorry, like the AP Psychology we began offering in 2016, this course does not have any prerequisites either. Unlike AP Psychology though, English 10 AP Seminar does not require an extra class period for students to engage in this more rigorous course. And it also is a course, you know, all of our 10th graders have to take English 10. And so given the factors that there are no prerequisites and it does not require an extra class period, with this unique framework, we are hopeful that students typically not looking at the AP pathway will be attracted to this particular course. So as I've already mentioned, there are no prerequisites for the course. It is a project-based learning model, which makes the course more relevant for more students. And it helps them to develop skills such as critical thinking, analytical writing, collaboration skills, academic research skills that are in topics of teachers' and students' choice. So that's an important thing there, that students really have the opportunity to look more into depth into things that are of interest to them. And one of the things that College Board has put out in their data is that the AP Seminar scores are more similar across white, black, and Hispanic students than any other AP course. And so as I mentioned, with us looking at our data, looking at last spring's data, we had 764 students take one or more of the 1,126 exams that we administered this past spring between both high schools. Of those 764 students, only 38 were black or African-American, 53 were Hispanic or Latino, 48 were Asian, and 45 reported two or more races. 24 of the 764 students did not report. And then it also is important to know that of those 764 students, 81 of them qualify for free and reduced lunch. So the skills that I talked about in regards to the critical thinking, the analytical writing, couldn't help but be drawn to the portrait of a learner when I started putting this presentation together and all of those things that we are, you know, wanting to see out of our students. And so I just broke those down for you on this particular slide about how each of those areas are addressed within this course. Students are required to deliver, design and deliver oral and visual presentations, both independently and collaboratively. And so that's a big thing when they're looking at their research and being able to develop, you know, develop those defenses and in the means of the real-world issues and topics that really draws students in. So there are some additional benefits of this particular course. They require no extra FTEs. This would be all taught by teachers that we already have, teaching English 10. Students earn a weighted credit just for taking the course. They have the opportunity to take the AP Seminar exam to earn college credit by scoring a three or higher. And most importantly, it does provide students with confidence to engage in more rigorous coursework. So these next few slides are those that we've been given permission by College Board to use to provide some additional information. As I mentioned, this course is designed for all students. We want to make sure that we're, you know, trying to reach some of those non-traditional AP students to help diversify those classrooms. You'll see here on this particular slide how AP Seminar fits into English 10. Prior to the recent release of the guidance from College Board to integrate Seminar into English 10, it was most offered, most often offered as an elective course. They have two courses that lead to what they call the AP Capstone Diploma. And so with this now, the students don't have to take it as an elective. It is embedded into one of their required courses through the Seminar framework. And so you'll see all of the components that are required within a traditional English 10 classroom and how the Seminar format does fit in to that. So the students are assessed through the team project and an individual research and essay presentation and, and of course, exam. So all of our students that are enrolled in AP classes have the opportunity to take the AP exam in the spring if they so choose. We do not require our students to take an exam if they choose not to. Students have various reasons why they may not take that exam. But we feel that just by sitting in the AP courses there, being challenged to, you know, getting that confidence to take on more rigorous coursework. The one exception with the AP Seminar over other classes is that there are things that they are doing throughout the year as part of the exam. So they will do a team project and presentation, like I said, and then that individual research. And then they can sit for the spring exam to then get that credit that then could be used in college for possible credit. And this here just also highlights some of the skills that I had talked about as they progress through their post-secondary path. It's going to prepare them, whether they're looking at a traditional two- or four-year college pathway, right into the workforce, military, trade school, all of the things that they learn within this class transfer over into those opportunities for them. So one of the things that makes this a good option for schools to offer is kind of an on-ramp into some of the upper-level courses is it has a high passage rate of a three or higher. And that's the level at which most colleges or universities will give college credit for. That is at 88%, which is really high. And what they found is when they started offering the AP Seminar integrated with English 10, is that the passage rate stayed the same and it increased by like 30% with the enrollment. And so with that high success rate, we do believe it to be a good fit for our students to build their confidence and ability to engage in upper-level coursework. Then you'll see here, as far as with this particular slide, the increase in performance on future AP assessments if they have engaged in the AP Seminar. And a few minutes, Ashton's going to talk to you a little bit about how that does come into play because she actually experienced this course as a student herself when she was in high school. And then you'll see here on this slide how there is a difference in the GPA at the college level, where the average first-year GPA is for non-AP students and then AP Seminar. So this is the timeline to kind of show you where we've been. This did begin last year, these conversations. We took a team of teachers from each high school and counselors and an administrator to the College Board AP Student Summit. And that's what they, we were looking at, is to find ways to encourage more students to take more rigorous classwork and again, make our AP classrooms mirror our hallways. And so during the 2020, I'm sorry, the 2023 school year, we did have these seminar discussions with the English Department administrators. We did some research of the course. And then we did have some students attend the AP Summer Institute, which is required of all students, or I'm sorry, of all teachers who are going to be teaching the course. And so we had one from each high school attend. And Ashton went through that, so I'm going to turn it over to her now.
Wonderful. Good evening. My name is Ashton Hunt. I currently teach at Worthington Kilborn and I'm a second-year teacher. And I just want to start off by saying thank you for your time and for allowing me to have this opportunity to share a little bit more about what I believe is really invaluable for our students. But as Suzanne kind of previewed, to adequately contextualize my experience with this course, I do have to take you back to my high school years, so long ago. But this course was offered as English 10 during my sophomore year, during the 2016-2017 year. I unfortunately did not feel confident enough at that time to embark on that course. My father was my superintendent, so I had an interesting schooling experience at large. But by the time that I was ready to embark on my senior year, I had decided that I wanted to be an English educator and that I was passionate about teaching students how to evaluate the world around them through the English Language and Language Arts. So I decided, you know what, I'm going to take AP Seminar as that extra scoop of English or an elective kind of alongside AP literature. And when I got into it, I did not know what to expect, but I walked out an independent, critical thinker and a collaborative leader. During the second half of my course, I actually, for my team presentation, had an opportunity to examine recidivism rates in America. And I took the ethical approach, whereas my other team members took a historical, social, and environmental approach. We broke off, conducted our own research, evaluated kind of multiple solutions on that end. And then from there, we congregated back together again and discussed plausible solutions to this real-world issue that all of us really cared about. And then from there, I had an opportunity to apply that individually. And I conducted a research essay on media bias and the impacts of media bias on politics just kind of in general, which is a conversation that is all too important now. And leaving there, I felt an empowered student that was ready to take on my secondary education. And so then I attended the University of Dayton. And when I got there, I realized, wow, this course is really cross-curricular because I was sitting in my philosophy class my freshman year. And my professor initiated class by saying like, hey, guys, how many of you know the recidivism rates in America? And everyone was just kind of crickets in my hand shot up. I was like, I was like, I do, I do. And I felt confident enough to kind of segue into those conversations. Now, that was not the only time that I referenced my work throughout college. I actually had the opportunity to reference it through other cross-curricular conversations, which is why I think this course is so invaluable. But in transitioning to me now as an educator, in having the amazing opportunity to train for this course, I actually learned that this course was created in response to a college's request to have more critical thinkers in their, in their rooms to evaluate evidence-based arguments and to create their own evidence-based arguments through multiple lenses and multiple perspectives, kind of like my recidivism research essay. And I immersed myself in the pedagogy, which I find to be astonishing. They have developed what they call a QUEST framework, and it's this notion that students are continuously on a quest in their class. And QUEST is an acronym for Question and Explore, Understand and Analyze, Evaluate Multiple Perspectives, Synthesize Ideas, Team, Transform, and Transmit. Now, the whole thing with QUEST is that students are cycling through this in a process that is recurring. So one student might get to the synthesized portion of the QUEST pedagogy and realize, hey, I need to go back to that question stage and refine my research question. And in just conducting research with my Honors English II students the past two and a half weeks, and not even in necessarily referencing this QUEST pedagogy, I can in fact confirm that this is an accurate pedagogy that will mimic the research process. And I think the last thing I want to say is that about three and a half weeks ago, one of my Honors English II students independently sent me a physics study that he was conducting outside of class and asked for feedback and for peer review and how that essay can kind of be constructed. It's a document that he's been working on for a couple of years now, actually. And while I was unable to understand the mathematical equations, I was able to provide the feedback in terms of the structure of the research. And all of that goes to say that I do thoroughly believe that there are students in our halls that can benefit from this class, and I'm a walking representation of it. And yeah, thank you for your time.
So again, where we are right now, we have identified some teachers to possibly teach this course next year. We've started engaging in some course planning days. Our most recent one, or our first one, was actually on September 11th. We met with four teachers to begin that initial planning. And then we did participate in a one-on-one chat with an expert for English 10 AP Seminar through the College Board. She is a teacher and instructional coach in the state of Delaware. And very excited, after this presentation had already been sent to you, I was contacted by the College Board to ask if we would like for her to come here and work with our teachers at College Board's expense. So really excited to, to benefit from her expertise. Then in November, we're looking at doing some more planning and then attending a College Board English 10 AP Seminar workshop in Gehanna to help prepare our teachers. We also have some administrators that will also be attending. And then this winter, we will continue looking into this course, which also are areas that need to be further explored and investigated. This approach is going to look different than what our traditional English 10 class currently is with a heavy focus on the literature. And so how do we make sure that those students are still getting that rich literature experience while also giving them this opportunity to engage in this Seminar-style framework? And then also our recruitment. You know, we want to make sure that we keep that enrollment of non-traditional students, you know, we have that at the forefront instead of those classes continuing to, to look the same. So that's some work we're going to be looking at and exploring. And then, you know, with the teachers, taking some of the ideas behind the Seminar and integrating them into their classrooms currently, and then ongoing collaboration. It is our hope that this winter, then, we can add this course to our scheduling options for students. And that's where we'll work closely with counselors and English IX teachers to share a course about what they can, can gain from enrolling in the class and get them scheduled into that. And that also includes sharing this opportunity with our, our parents as well when it comes time for scheduling. And then it is our hope that in the 25, 26 school year, we will be offering this course. And we will continue the monitoring of the course and looking at how we may need to refine it as we move forward. And so that is the end of our presentation. Are there any questions?
Suzanne, Ashton, thank you so much for this presentation. It was just amazing. Does anyone have any feedback or questions?
Go ahead. Thank you for that. I did have just a few questions. You, you ran through some numbers that I was trying to jot down here. He said 764 of the students take one or more AP exams. That's both high schools?
Yes.
How many people, how many students take AP courses that don't take the exams? Do we?
That's a good question. I would have to, to pull that. The majority of our students do take the exams. We do have some courses that that may not be the case, especially when you look at AP English Lang and English Lit, that a lot of colleges, if you take one, they won't give you the course credit for the other. Now with the Seminar, it wouldn't be a college credit for English at this time. It would most likely be like for an elective course instead.
Okay. And then you had other numbers. I just, I grabbed the first and the last.
Okay.
Do you have those? Could you go through those again? You said 38 of those, 764 were Black?
Uh huh. And 53 Hispanic or Latino, 48 were Asian, 45 reported two or more races, non-Hispanic, and 24 students did not report.
And then 81 free and reduced.
Yes.
Of 764.
Yes.
Which is a smaller number of the overall.
Right.
So can you talk a little bit about recruitment for those, those underserved communities that aren't represented in those numbers? That, I mean, you said with this class, you know, you think that that could maybe be sort of a gateway to some of these other AP courses, but is that something that you're currently doing now or?
Yeah, so that was part of the conversation last year when we attended that College Board Summit with our team of teachers and counselors and administrators. And one of the biggest things that has come through loud and clear is that personal connection of somebody reaching out to that student and sharing that they believe they have the ability to challenge themselves and do well in the course. And so that was where focus was last year. We had Mr. Keenan, who's now, you know, at Worthingway. He worked with the AP teachers there at Thomas, for example. They looked at what's known as an AP potential report that we get from College Board, from students that take like the PSAT that gives their probability of doing well, the confidence level. And they were focusing on and targeting different students to make that personal connection and reach out to.
So that would be outreach that came from maybe a teacher or counselor?
Yes.
Some kind of twister that the student knew.
Correct.
Just encouraged them to try and go that route.
Yeah. That seems to have the biggest impact as somebody just saying, I believe you can do that.
Sure. And this would be, it's English 10, so it would be open to sophomores, but it would also be available to juniors and seniors as well or only sophomores?
Just sophomores. It would be an English 10 AP Seminar.
Okay. And typically sophomores aren't taking a whole lot of AP courses, right?
Correct.
So this would sort of be the first taste of the AP program?
Yes. Our psychology, which is the other one that doesn't have any prerequisites, we do see sophomores in as well.
Okay. I think that's all I had.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yep. This makes my heart very happy, so thank you for this. I just have one, I think you answered this, and I just want to make sure I heard it correctly. When you talk about having a flexible curriculum and, and so it can be flexible from year to year and like students are really choosing their own path and...
Did you want to speak to that or with?
I, I would just say that when I took it, obviously I took it as a senior. What, what do you mean by students would be able to choose their own?
So not their own path. So I'm thinking like with the flexible curriculum and they're choosing like texts or, or whatever that they are interested in, right, that are engaging them and?
Absolutely. This has a high component of student agency. They have complete choice in what they're examining in terms of PT1 and PT2, which are just team presentations.
Ashton.
Yeah.
Sorry. I'm going to have you speak into the microphone just to make sure that people online in the recording pick you up.
Oh, oh, yeah, absolutely. So yeah, they have complete agency in what they're examining in terms of second semester as well, when they are embarking on those research essays and presentations. They will put their heads together to derive a research question. The team portion of it is completely anything that they choose or identify as a real world issue that's going to resonate with them. For the individual component, the College Board will provide a stimulus packet with seven stimulus sources with a common theme. The theme is usually relatively obvious, and the student's only requirement is to create a research question that will address that theme.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. I just, I, I love all of the kind of intersecting opportunities here, right, for, for students that may not be comfortable doing an AP class, doing something that may be a little bit less threatening. Speaking as a student who took an AP course and had zero interest in taking an exam, I do appreciate that we do not require that. Because I think there's, there's a lot of validity in just, not just, in going through the course and learning the content and mastering those critical thinking skills because ultimately like that's what we want them to be able to apply, not the number that they get on the test. So, so I've always appreciated that. But I think, I think this is fantastic, so thank you so much.
Well, thank you. Yeah, and that is the one thing, you know, with the going into other AP classes, but those skills taught are important for IB, for the College Credit Plus, the, the STEM classes that we have, and then just into the workforce, military and things like that. They're all skills that are transferable as we have in our Portrait of a Learner.
Thank you both for being here. And Ashley, it was really nice to hear your high school experience because we don't get that side of our presentations very often. And actually Amber kind of asked most of my questions, but I really, I liked the way you tied it to Portrait of a Learner, that we're using that and tying it in. And it just pretty much fit exactly in there, so that was good to see. We have been talking for a long time about reaching non-traditional students, so I think that this really is a good opportunity for that. And I was going to ask about recruitment, but really you went through that with Amber. I think that one-on-one, actually inviting the students in is going to be the way to get them, so I like that idea. So, well, how many opportunities are there for sophomores for AP? This and psychology and is that about it?
Psychology, and now I am blanking on US history. They do that sophomore, APUSH sophomore. And then we have some that may have accelerated and so they're taking them a little bit earlier, but those are our two big ones. And the APUSH is a very intense, rigorous class. And so to have that as your first one can be a little scary. So that's nice that the AP Seminar does encourage that student choice and things like that to get them hooked.
Great. Thank you.
Bringing up APUSH really quickly. One thing that I do want to highlight is that my instructor also pointed out that she intentionally plans her course kind of to complement APUSH. So there's a lot of agency in terms of teachers' decisions about how they want to lay out the course. One of them is thematically, and she actually aligns her text with post-colonialism when APUSH students are working on kind of that realm as well. So that's where another cross-curricular opportunity does come in, but I did want to highlight that as we were talking about APUSH for sophomores.
Thank you.
I mean, the more you add, the, the better it gets, right? I wrote that down, like it's just that it's complimenting other curriculum within the building and that people are working together. Love this. Absolutely love it. Make sure I told you to talk into the microphone, right? But just Suzanne, you said to mirror the students that are in our hallways, right? And so I know from experience, the time that your department has taken and our administration has taken to make sure that we're introducing AP classes to students who don't necess, have, don't think that they can or just don't think about it or know how much we offer it. And so I think this is a great pathway. So I really appreciate the thorough time that you've taken, that timeline. I mean, you've been working on this for a really long time, so I really appreciate that. Love the connection to Portrait of a Learner always. I just, I, I just love that everything like bleeds through our, you know, entire district at that time. And that personal invitation is crucial. And Ashton, like I just think your personal experience with that and obviously your passion for it and all the ways that it carried you through will just like resonate with students. And so I appreciate the value that you had, that you actually took that class as well.
Thank you.
So just going forward, you, in the very beginning, you mentioned pilot or full implementation? Or maybe Angie said that? So do you determine along this way before scheduling happens?
That is the, the plan.
I mean, that sounds like a dumb question, but like, is that you're, you're still evaluating whether it will be a pilot, pilot class or you're going to do full implementation?
Yes.
Okay. If you could just keep us updated on, on that, because I would, I would love to share with other families that class offering that's coming up to just kind of get that experience for, and I'd like to see those numbers go up more than, you know, that you, than you listed here.
Yeah.
Thank you so much for taking time.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything before we move on? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Angie. I don't know why I'm turning my microphone off. All right. Moves us on to reports and announcements. We're going to start with the superintendent's report, Dr. Bowers.
Yes, thank you. So our mission in Worthington Schools is to empower a community of learners who will change the world. We do that through four vision statements, and so this report is broken up by those vision statements. So our first vision statement is we will engage each student with diverse opportunities to maximize every student's potential. That's easy to see after that presentation. So the state of Ohio released School District Report Cards on September 14th. You can find that on the ODEW website. Just like last year, Worthington was rated as 4.5 stars out of a possible five stars. Our highest measure of five stars was in gap closing, the measure of the reduction of educational gaps for students. And so we think that's something to certainly be proud of. We're thankful for our dedicated team of teachers, support staff members, and principals that are working with our students each day. And we would just recommend that our community take a look at that on the ODEW website. The second vision statement is we'll provide a safe environment where every student can grow intellectually, physically. If you follow our It's Worth It hashtag on social media, you've likely seen that our transportation team has been completing bus safety and evacuation drills at each elementary school. This year, we expanded the bus safety portion of that training to encompass all K5 students thanks to our amazing transportation team and for Rob Messenheimer and our elementary principals for making this training happen just in an effort to make sure we keep our, as many of our students safe as possible with bus safety. Our third vision statement is we'll provide consistent communication and promote dialogue within our community. So earlier this year, Governor Dewine signed legislation on cell phone use in schools during the school hours. School districts, as you know, have until July of 2025 to adopt a policy on cell phones. Before the policy was adopted, we were seeking feedback from staff, students, and families. And so we asked the question, what thoughts, concerns, or recommendations do you have regarding students' use of cell phones or smartwatches during the school day? And we used a tool called Thought Exchange. Roughly 5,000 community members, nine, 12 students and staff members completed the exchange. The results of the family portion of that, actually the results of all three sections, will be released tomorrow in a blog post explaining where we are. And we'll be back to present at the October 14th Board Meeting those results to the Board before our Board policy begins to work later in the school year on official policy. And then our fourth vision statement is we'll be responsible and transparent with community resources. So last summer, we applied for a federal grant to cover the installation of Cintegix, the rapid alert system that we're piloting at Brookside Worthington Estates, Perry, Phoenix, and Worthington Academy. And we were one of only five districts in Ohio that were approved for 150,000 of this funding relating to preventing school violence. So thus, if we do decide to expand the Cintegix pilot to all of our schools, this should offset most of the first year implementation cost. So we were excited to receive that grant. Vice President Davis, that's my report.
Thank you, Dr. Bowers. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Okay. We will move on. We will move on to the treasurer's report, TJ.
Thank you. I would just like to provide some background information on the insurance rates that are on tonight's agenda for approval later on. So we are facing a 6% increase in medical insurance premiums, and that is due to claims for the first nine months of this year running over projections, right? So our costs have been higher than what we anticipated, but it's also due to what I would call a higher-than-typical inflationary period in the medical industry, especially in our area. So as we drive up and down 315, you will see major hospital additions on both sides of the road. That capital outlay is leading to central Ohio experiencing higher medical costs than other areas of Ohio. So we started out the process, the annual rate-setting process, looking at a 15.1% increase in premium next year. However, as a self-funded entity, we've built up ample reserves to be able to mitigate that somewhat this year, and so we're recommending a 6% increase drawing down those reserves. Now, that's a sort of a one-time fix, not a long-term solution, but we're hopeful to have a better year ahead. It is still projected to leave us in the middle range of our reserves for next year, so we're not emptying the tank, so to speak. We'll be in a decent place next year, but we are drawing that down to get us to a 6% increase. Also on the agenda, we're moving to self-fund our dental program, similar to how we do our medical program. That means we, we will still employ a carrier, Delta Dental, to process claims, build the network, et cetera, but we will ultimately be responsible to pay those claims. So there's risk the first year, because we don't have any reserves, but there's also greater reward if claims level out and we cut out the profit margin of the carrier. So we're big enough to do that, and Dublin is doing the same thing. They use the same carrier. Westerville already does the same thing and uses the same carrier. So we're also able to leverage buying power to push down rates in that regard as well. So we are moving to self-fund dental later on in this agenda. So I'm happy to answer any questions as we get to those items. I just wanted to take this opportunity to provide some background. I will also say, since we were talking about AP exams, this question comes to me every year, comes to us every year. US News rankings rates, they categorize simply giving an AP exam as being rated higher. And so we get a question as to why we're lower than our peers in US News rankings. It's simply because we give that option not to take that test, as we have discussed tonight, and that's an important option, it's an option we all believe in, but it does come with that issue, and we have to answer that question every year. We once did some research, some of our peers gave more exams but failed more exams, and so that costs parents dollars to get you a perceived higher rating, when in reality, I don't know that that methodology works. But I think anytime we have this forum, we talk about that, it's important that we, we mention that and clarify that. So that is all I have, Mrs. Davis.
Thanks, TJ, you're giving a lot of background tonight. Appreciate it.
Background, okay, got it.
All right, we're moving on to board committee reports and announcements. Does anyone have anything to share or announce?
I can go, since I've been told I'm going to report on the law seminar. So I, I will start, and Kelly will fill in details. Kelly and I attended, my notes say, on September 9th, a school law seminar, and I don't have the firm, do you have the firm written down? Thank you? Yeah, Peble and Wagner. It was all day, it was great. So I'm gonna highlight a few things, a few things I put on the agenda for us, or I, I sent to Nikki to put on the agenda for Friday, because I think it's more of a working session sort of thing. But it was, was it the 9th? It wasn't the 9th, it was the 12th, my notes are lying, it's the 12th. It was, so they covered, I think, 13 different topics and kind of a quick hit, and so I think what we can do is share with the whole board in that shared doc, just the, the notes from that, because that's probably the most beneficial. But they went over everything, just from, you know, legality around recordings, meetings and things like that, which, you know, we all know, but being a new board member was helpful for me. Data privacy, which was kind of new for me, and just, let's see, what else? Upcoming legislation, which is something that I wanna talk about Friday, too, just to make sure that we are prepared for things that are coming or, or have recently come down, just to make sure that we, as a district, are in compliance. Talked a lot about Title IX, which has become a little bit more strict, which is, from my perspective, a good thing, but we just, everybody should be aware of that. And talked about the cellphone policy, which Trent has been very on top of, so. But I think, just to kind of, I don't know, in general, I think those are probably the big, the big things, just, and then just sharing them with everybody to make sure we're all on the same page is probably the big takeaway for me, and you can fill in the rest if you want. We also had a regional conference at OSBA last week. Toya won an award, so congratulations on that, and I was glad to be there. The keynote speaker was Michelle Newman from the State Board of Ed, and the big takeaway from her speech was just that kind of a reminder that, you know, to continue to support and uphold public education, which is just always a good reminder. I think we're all here, because that is something that is very important to us. And I was reminded as we listened to the presentation on the AP seminar, that that is just one of the reasons that this job is so cool, and that public education is so cool, and so important, is to have those opportunities for kids. So just a, you know, a reminder that we're fighting the good fight and keep doing it. And then I went to Worthing to see council, obviously they signed, they passed the MOU, and then it comes to us tonight, so that's one thing that happened, and then they had an update on their comprehensive plan. So that's, that was helpful for me to hear the plan on kind of how they're gonna move forward, heavily, heavy focus on public engagement that goes throughout early 2026. So hopefully we'll have involvement from not just the city, but the people in the district as well, since we are so closely related in one big community. So I think that's it for me.
Thank you, Stephanie. Anyone else have something?
I've not had any committee meetings, but we have academic achievement tomorrow, so things are starting up.
It for me.
I've had a couple. Angie and I went to PTAC last week, I think it was, and talked to that group. It was the first meeting of the year, so all of the representatives from the different buildings, PTAs were there and PTOs. So Angie talked a little bit about AI and some of the policy and guidelines that we're working on here in the district. I ran through a lot of what Trent just, I kinda just pulled up your email and read through some of that, so I gave them a little bit of a construction update and talked about cellphones, talked about Centregix, is that how you say that, right? Also kinda teased them about, teased up Blameduck session, which is, you know, after Election Day with the legislature and some of the bills that come fast and furious that we'll be keeping an eye on, how we cut fees this year, and the bond issues being pushed out '27, '28, and the report card. So we provided them with a lot of information. They had some questions about playground equipment and the signs that are being replaced and what the order was, so they were curious about that. But overall, it was, it's just a great group, and they're just so active, you know, in their buildings, and it's just a really good sounding board, I think, for, for us to hear from, too. And then the communications committee met today, so Kelly and I sat down with Vicki and Dawn, and we heard about the website and was pleased to hear that it does have the final site, which is the platform that they're doing the back, the backend part of the website on. It has capability to flag things if they're not ADA compliant, so if it has alt text or, you know, if it's not visible for colorblindness, things like that, it will flag those things for them, so they don't have to go through and like, you know, find those things on their own. So that was really good to hear. They had, can I share these numbers with just traffic a little bit? Because I think it might be interesting to the board. New visitors since the launch, 68,000, and some of the other things that, there's been 35,000 files downloaded, because we have a lot of our forums on the website, so people can go there and they can download the forums they need, and 35,000 just seems like an incredible number for just such a short amount of time since they launched the website. And there's also been, where was the page visits? Or the total page? Oh, so they've created 3,693 pages. Yeah. And that's been pretty much Dawn, right, for the last 18 months or so, just really, really going through that. So that is a monumental task, just revamping a website like that, and I just think the team's really, really done a great job. So we talked about that, and, I'm gonna do my notes, what else did we talk about? Communications. Kelly, can I, am I forgetting anything? We talked about grant, brand guidelines. We have a key communicators committee meeting coming up this week, too. Thomas Open House is going to be, I don't have the date in front of me, October 1st, yes, thank you. So mark that on your calendars, it's gonna be a fun event. And, yeah, the next big one is State of the Schools, which is not until February, but that's what Vicki's team is working on, too, and that one will be virtual this year. And then Homecoming for Kilborn was this past weekend. So my husband and I worked the concession stand at the dance, which I didn't know they had concessions at the dance, but they did, and so we volunteered, and it was just really, really, really fun to see, everybody dressed up, but also just the way the district does that event, because, you know, I'm thinking back to when I was in high school, and it was so centered around the music and the dance, but this is just bigger than that. It's at the football field, so it's outside, it was a beautiful night, they had lights, they had music and they had dancing, but they also had tables set up where you could do board games, or just talk to your friends, or, you know, just hang out. And that was just, I think, just an incredible way of having that event. I feel like that brings out a lot of kids that maybe wouldn't come to a school dance, because they're maybe intimidated by the music and the dancing, and because now they know that they can just hang out with their friends, and it just sort of makes everything a little bit more casual. So I was really impressed by that, that was the first time I'd ever, my girls were obviously humiliated that I was there. They did come and say hi, but it was fun for me to see kind of the inside of that. So that's all I have.
You mean to say our kids don't always want to come?
I was surprised they came and said hello.
I do, I don't really have a whole lot to add to the law seminar that Stephanie and I went to, other than it was just great. I mean, you think of law seminar, I think, nap, not necessarily, I'm sorry. Should not have the microphone. But no, seriously, like, you think about legal language, and you think that it's gonna be difficult to understand, but they did a really good job making 30-minute presentations, like Stephanie said, on 13 different topics. Policy, you know, of course, is interested, to me, being on the policy committee, of legislation that has passed and legislation that has been introduced, and so they talked about that in two different sessions. Just public records, a good reminder of public records requests, open meetings and things like that. So I thought it was good, and yes, we will, we can expand on that during our work session, that would be good. Amber, I think you covered everything for the communications committee. Yeah, that was good. Thank you. I did attend the community coffee, I don't remember the date, at Panera with Trent, and Angie was there, and Jeff was there, it was a great, actually Vicki was there, a great turnout of people. There were a lot of questions around construction, of course, changes in principles around our policies, and just some questions about curriculum and course offering. So really robust conversation, I felt like. The group was really engaged, our administration, of course, had wonderful answers and even stayed after to follow up. If you'd like to attend the next one, those listening, and those here, the next one is October 11th, it's a Friday, and it will be at, I don't remember off the top of my head, okay. At Polaris, yes, okay. I also attended a free, just emphasis on free, because I went to Cincinnati, so I don't want you to think that, okay. It was Advocate Day for Education, and so our keynote, the keynote speaker of the event was actually a Worthington resident, so I thought that was pretty cool. And he talked about legislation and things that are impacting public education right now, so it was just really good information to hear. And then you had different sessions you can break up into, and, you know, we always go to OSBA, or you go to board leadership and all those things, and you wanna listen to all the things, but you can only pick one. So I had to pick, one of the ones that I went to was about caring for student mental health. So they talked a lot about creating an internal system for care, so not just, like, connecting to this program only, because programs come and go, but when you make it a culture, you make it your system, then students are supported in that way, and just having different layers of support, and also having partnerships, obviously, with agencies within your community and outside. So I went to three sessions. The second one I went to was just trending issues that are impacting public education, so again, just another reminder of, like, what legislation has passed and what legislation has been introduced, and just getting more information about that was very helpful. And then lastly was authentically hearing students' voices. So when I think about, like, we have student feedback sessions coming up, I think in October, that was just a really important session, I thought was good to listen to, talking about centering students' stories and narratives, and not only making a space for them to be able to share their story, but also making space where the people that are listening are respecting the voice that's being shared, so that we're making sure that that happens as well during those times. And then creating active opportunities for engagement so that we can identify students' vision for community change. So like, you know, students are in the buildings, right? And so it's important to hear their voice and hear what their ideas are. You know, they say kids are the future, I believe it, I do. And then lastly, I think, lastly, the Central Region Conference, Toya. Her award was for exemplary school employee award, and that's because your peers and us, we see the value in you and what you bring to this district. So just very grateful that you're here, and so congratulations, well deserved, grateful to be there, the food was delicious. And Michelle Newman, she did give some great remarks about what is happening in public education, how we can advocate for that, and just, it was a very, like, moving, I was like, okay, all right. So that's all I have. Uh-oh, now my notes are all mixed up. We're gonna move on to actions recommended by the treasurer. Hold on a second, TJ. That's what happens when you have too many papers. All right.
Shh, Amy's here.
Okay, we're going, sorry. Okay. Approval of the minutes. TJ.
Thank you. I would like to recommend that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the September 9th meeting as presented in enclosure E1, please.
So moved.
Second.
Hey, there's been a motion and a second. Are there any questions or amendments to the minutes? TJ, will you please call for the vote?
Mrs. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. Epling Skinner.
Yes.
Ms. Harless.
Yes.
Mrs. Best.
Yes.
Okay, next is appropriations and modifications.
Thank you. I'd like to recommend that the Board of Education approve the appropriations modifications for the general fund as listed in your agenda. These are cross-object categorical transfers that net to zero, please.
So moved.
Second.
Hey, there's been a motion and a second. Are there any questions or comments? Okay, TJ, will you please call for the vote?
Mrs. Epling Skinner.
Yes.
Ms. Harless.
Yes.
Mrs. Best.
Yes.
Mrs. Davis.
Yes. All right, next up is actions recommended by the treasurer, new business.
Thank you. I'd like to recommend that the Board approve the health, dental, vision and life insurance premium rates for January 2025 through December 2025 as presented in your agenda and mentioned previously.
So moved.
Second.
Hey, there's been a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? TJ, will you please call for the vote?
Ms. Harless.
Yes.
Mrs. Best.
Yes.
Mrs. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. Epling Skinner.
Yes.
Establishment of new fund.
Yes, I'd like to recommend that the Board of Education establish Fund 0249002 in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code. This is a technical portion of the code requiring the Board to approve this fund. It will establish our dental self-insurance program, January 1, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Hey, there's been a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Okay, TJ, will you please call for the vote?
Mrs. Best.
Yes.
Mrs. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. Epling Skinner.
Yes.
Ms. Harless.
Yes.
City of Worthington memorandum of understanding outdoor pool area.
Thank you. I'd like to recommend the Board of Education approve a memorandum of understanding with the City of Worthington regarding the potential future sale of the outdoor pool property as indicated in enclosure F3, please.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Any questions or further comments or discussions?
I just wanna say one thing. I wholeheartedly believe in the value of a community pool, and I do have some concerns going forward. I, this is the right move, no question. I just want to make sure that, you know, like you, from my questions earlier, that as we move forward with this, that we get the right language to protect our entire community as we move forward with the city on this agreement. So that's, I just wanted to put that on the record.
Thank you. I'll just add that even though Nikki is not here to vote, she did send that she is in support of the memorandum, so. That's all I want to add. TJ, can you please call for the vote?
Mrs. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. Epling Skinner.
Yes.
Ms. Harless.
Yes.
Mrs. Best.
Yes.
All right. It's now time for the personnel consent agenda, Dr. Bowers.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to recommend that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda. That's items G2 through G6 on your agenda.
So moved. Second.
Hey, there's been a motion and a second. Do you guys have any questions or concerns about the consent agenda? TJ, will you please call for the vote?
Mrs. Epling Skinner.
Yes.
Ms. Harless.
Yes.
Mrs. Best.
Yes.
Mrs. Davis.
Yes. That takes us to actions recommended by the superintendent, new business.
Thank you. I'd like to recommend that the Board of Education accept the donations from the individuals and organizations listed in item H1 of your agenda. Item H1, acceptance of donations, please.
So moved. Second.
Hey, there's been a motion and a second. Any questions or concerns? TJ, will you please call for the vote?
Ms. Harless.
Yes.
Mrs. Best.
Yes.
Mrs. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. Epling Skinner.
Yes.
Thank you. I'd like to recommend that the Board of Education approve item H2. Item H2 is the recommended motion to approve the continued enrollment of a senior student at Thomas Worthington High School. Item H2, please.
So moved. Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Do you guys have any questions about this motion? Okay. TJ, will you please call for the vote?
Mrs. Best.
Yes.
Mrs. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. Epling Skinner.
Yes.
Ms. Harless.
Yes.
Okay, that leads us to any requests, questions, concerns from the Board. Do I have anything? Nothing?